Thank you, thank you. Came straight from school today, so didn't get a chance to change, but you know. Oh, I forgot there's a whole sports thing happening right now.
We'll start and then I'll call ya. I think, I think we're about ready to start. I don't wanna, to rush anyone, but thank you all for being here this evening. I hope everyone can hear us alright. It's an honor to be here and serve as Mayor of Bonner Springs. I'm Jeff Harrington. We'll go ahead and start our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and follow it with our invocation brought this evening by Councilman Roger Shannon. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, things are happening in this world that you made. They bring you sorrow and grief. We pray for the six people. Evelyn Dickens, nine. Willie Scrooge, nine. William Kenny, nine. Cynthia P., sixty-one in the future. Catherine Koo, sixty, a teacher. Mike Hill, a teacher, sixty-one. And their families. We all pray for the continued safety of our families, first responders, and all your children everywhere. We ask this in the precious name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. You all can be seated, thank you. I have the honor this evening of bringing a proclamation in. If I could have Keith Kennedy with Seven Days come forward? Proclamation reads, whereas Seven Days makes a ripple, change the world, overcomes hate by promoting kindness and understanding through education and dialogue, and whereas Seven Days encourages all people to participate in activities that promote and practice kindness, and whereas Seven Days 2023 will begin its events on Wednesday, April 5th, with the Kindness Kickoff Breakfast and conclude with its Annual Kindness Walk on Sunday, April 16th, at the Church of the Resurrection in Leewood, Kansas. And whereas Seven Days continues with themed days of love, discover, others, connect, you go onward as we bring all people together to overcome hate with acts of kindness based on these themes each day. And whereas the memories of three wonderful and unique people, Real Underwood, Re-, I'm sorry, Rhett Underwood, Dr. William Corperin, and Terry Lamano, will be honored through kindness and understanding. Whereas the City of Bonner Springs fully supports and encourages all residents, businesses, organizations, and visitors to come together during the Seven Days to act more kindly and be more understanding of differences, thereby making the world a better place, one ripple at a time. Now therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 6th, 7th, and 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th as 2023, as Seven Days of Kindness in Bonner Springs, and urge all citizens to engage in acts of kindness throughout the week and remember the events of April 13th, 2014, not only for the losses of that day, but also for the significance of the powerful and enduring vow to overcome hate with kindness. Would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the city for recognizing this work. Mindy Copren, who's the daughter and mother of two of the victims, has spent the last nine years trying to bring the community together, and all communities together, just to really, just to, just to talk about and have a dialogue about hate and how it has no place in our society. So it's just a real honor. Thank you, council, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing this and being a part of the solution.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving right along. We'll go ahead and have an opportunity for citizens to address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda. Those of you here are welcome to stand and address the city council about any issue that you have, and if necessary, we'll research and put it on a future agenda. Anyone like to come? Please. Push that little button at the bottom. Mr. Mackey? There's a little button at the bottom of that. There you go.
Jordan Michael Tyner Mackey, 120 Emerson Avenue, Bonner Springs, Kansas. I'd like to say hello, mayor, council, everyone. I came in tonight as an inspiration thanks to Councilman Shannon's comments about the taxes. I think all of us are a little taken aback, at least I know I was. My appraisal has went up 20% over the past two years consecutively, and that's, I mean, a boon to Bonner and Wyandotte County and how well we're doing and the real estate valuation and all of those things. However, I know that whenever I was sworn into council in 2018, I took it upon myself to do a personal project and check into larger parcels, businesses, and things like that. Most of them have still held, however, there is one parcel in particular. It's the Deffenbaugh Industries Project, which whenever, I believe it was, I have the original records, which creatively have been lost from the database of Wyandotte County, but I still have the luckily the hard copies. And I'll give you the very short version. The property was purchased for roughly 6.4 million by Waste Management. It was part of a multiple purchase thing. There's, the parcel that I'm talking about is 490 acres. There's an additional parcel above it. I didn't get printed off, but it's another 150 acres. And my concern is that whenever I, or if you look at the appraisal value, with Sean's help and several other individuals throughout the county, we were able to get it reappraised, a taxable valuation of 69,000 in 2018. In 2019, it went up to 176,000, and then even increased another in 2020 to 226,000. However, my council seat was done in 2022. Ironically enough, the property all of a sudden wasn't worth what it was, and it dropped by literally half. I, my request tonight is, Mr. Johnston, the new city administrator, I met him, as well as Commissioner Burrows today, and he asserted his dedication to Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and essentially to our city. And I would like to request if one of you all, as a sitting city council member, or Sean, or somebody with the city, could request justification for this. And the reason I bring it up mainly is because, literally, right next to the property, there was 69 acres that recently sold for approximately $12,477 an acre, or $860,000. So somehow, they were able to justify dropping property this literally the exact same. It's right next to it, it's adjacent. They dropped the property by $3 million for no purpose whatsoever, when a sale this year by one of the largest, most professional companies in the Kansas City, I guess, actually in the Midwest region, I won't say who it's purchased by, but there's a big blue sign on the property. Obviously, they know more than I do, and I believe that we deserve justification for why all of a sudden Waste Management is taking $140,000 out of our budget and about $40,000 from our schools. If somebody could look into that, I would appreciate it. I have all the documentation going back 10 years. If anybody needs help, Sean, while I was on council, was able to allow me to take a class on property tax valuation in 2019. I'm speaking from appraisal justification, at least according to the Kansas Revenue Department. If they need any help, or Commissioner Burrows, or any of you need any help, I'm more than happy to make sure we get this fixed, because our city deserves the essence of equity whenever the nothing's changed. Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Certainly have that looked into. Anyone else that'd like to stand and address the city council? About any issue? Seeing none, we'll move along to our first item of business this evening, the Nettleton Seven Associates LLC Funding Agreement, staff?
Consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. The consent agenda, yes. Why not do it the way we've always done it? Our first item is actually the agenda and, approve the agenda and the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes minutes from the March 13th city council meeting, plans for city operation, massage therapy license for Jing Shang, public use request for the Bubble Run 5K. Anything to be pulled by staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded, questions or clarifications? Nothing here. Vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Now, on to the widely advertised first item of new business, the Nettleton Seven Associates LLC Funding Agreement. Sorry about that.
Hi, Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. This is a funding agreement with the developers at the end of the dead end of Nettleton and K7. There are two large parcels there that have been rezoned in, I believe, February and November of last year for Light Industrial. This funding agreement will let us begin negotiating any incentive discussions with those developers. It will pay for the professional services related to those discussions. Happy to answer any questions? I believe we have a representative of the developer here. If there are any questions of them.
Very good. Thank you. Any other staff? Anything to add? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the funding agreement with the Nettleton Seven Associates LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon. Seconded by Mr. Stevens, and we'll start with questions, concerns, comments right here. Nothing.
Nothing. Nothing.
I think everything was spelled out well. Nothing extra.
Very good. You made mention that the, one of the properties was rezoned back in February. Was that the northern part?
The southern one went first. It was in February, and the northern one was later in the year, November.
Alright, I only recalled one, so that's fine. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, congratulations, thank you. Moving along, item number two, the resolution setting combination hearing for 820 North Nettleton.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. So this item and the next are both related. They are for the structures on the parcel at the corner of Nettleton and Metropolitan. We did adopt a resolution setting a public hearing in January for tonight. However, when we were doing the resolutions for that public hearing, we realized that it had to be published twice, the notice for the public hearing. So unfortunately, we're having to set it again for May 8th.
So it can be published twice?
So it can be published twice, and the resolution now reflects that it has to be published twice. And we'll record all of that.
Any other staff? Citizens? I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing at 7:30 PM on May 8th, 2023, to determine why the structure located at 820 North Nettleton Avenue should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. We'll start down here, any questions, concerns, comments, sir?
Not this evening.
Nothing.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And that says all with item number two, and item number three, very similar, with a different address, 13103 Metropolitan.
This is the, the structure behind the one fronting Nettleton. Same parcel.
Anything to add? Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution setting the public, a public hearing at 7:30 PM on May 8th, 2023, to determine why the structures located at 13103 Metropolitan Avenue should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon, seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here. I would bet.
No questions.
No questions.
Nothing further.
Not this evening. Nothing.
Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
McMahon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Very good. So we'll see that back May 8th. Onto item number four, the governing body policy for nuanced nuisance code procedures. Nuanced.
They are nuanced.
Nuanced nuisance code procedures.
Evening, council members. Mark Lee, Community Development Director. I'm here this evening with Mark Stites, Code Enforcement Officer, to discuss the governing body policy for the nuisance code procedures and changes that were made to that recently. The biggest changes that I noted was a change in his title from Property Maintenance Code Officer to Code Enforcement Officer, the removal of the section referencing municipal court, the addition of administrative citations, and the addition of, there's language in there that occurs after three administrative citations have been issued, or a total of $5,000 in administrative citations have been issued, that it can either proceed in front of the governing body, district court, or municipal court. And then there is the, and some expansion on the language of courtesy notices. Other than that, though, this outlines procedures that Mr. Stites would follow when it comes to code enforcement.
Very good. Anything else from any other staff? Citizens? Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, amend, or deny the updates to the policy.
Pick one.
You're gonna approve, or you're gonna amend it, or you're gonna deny it. Back away from this for a minute, let me. Approve.
Somebody else wants to make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the updates to the policy for nuisance procedures.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Stevens. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here, sir?
Thank you.
Yes.
My mind just went.
That's alright.
Nothing here.
No questions? Can you give a little bit of a, some background of why you had to make these changes or why you felt like it was necessary?
The biggest section was that we were no longer taking individuals to municipal court, and it would turn into an administrative citation, and that language wasn't even in there whatsoever. So that had to be amended to make those two changes, for sure. And then the minor change of his title and things like that, but that, there was really not an updated, defined process on how municipal code violations were being handled.
Very good. Thank you.
It's very complicated. I'm impressed with everything that you had to do. Wow. Nothing.
Nothing additional?
I just want something that's gonna work. We've had programs in the past, and they just haven't quite got us to a final destination. So, looking forward to that here.
I think Mr. Stites is as well. I think we're there with this, so.
Well, and, and not just work, but protect the city and you, and provide a great place to live here in Bonner Springs. And there's a lot of nuisances that we need to continue to deal with. It's coming up on weed season, and there'll be a lot of nuisances there. And we need to be able to enforce and protect the, the community as best we can. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve the updates to the policy for the nuisance procedures. Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Onto item number five, the final plat approval for FP 0122, Ensign Commercial Third Plat.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, this evening we are here to have council approve the replat for Ensign Storage, it's the Ensign Storage Third Plat. They've expanded their property. There were some discussions and some property purchases from the Agriculture Hall of Fame. They expanded to the north and to the east. None of the rights, right-of-way has changed along 130th or north 130th Street. All of that remain the same. There's utility easements placed around the edges of the property, or around the entire edge of the property, and then there's some interior ones for their use as well. But that is what we're here this evening for on that plat.
Very good. Any other staff? Seeing none, citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the final plat, FP 01-22, Ensign Commercial Third Plat.
Second. Moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here, sir?
Nothing here. I noticed it was a fairly easy item, it looks like, from the planning commission. I noticed there was only the one issue with David Hoibrink was concerned with the stormwater, but that's all been addressed.
Yes, so they're dealing separately from the plat on trying to obtain another easement from the Agriculture Hall of Fame for future expansion if need be, and stormwater detention at that time. Currently, it's housed underground in a portion of their outside, and then it'll be in the northwest corner as well. They have an outside or an exposed detention facility.
And Mr. Hoibrink, I assume when that was discussed, he was, he was fine with what he heard?
He seemed to be, yes.
Good to hear, thank you.
That was my question.
Nothing here.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
McMahon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number six, a final plat approval of a replat of RP 0123 for 542 Lake Forest Drive.
This, this came about actually from the applicant. They had initially applied for a fence permit, but their fence permit that they indicated was clear out into what is called common property, or owned by the HOA. So unfortunately, I had to lead them through the process of replating their property, which actually they purchased property from the HOA and expanded their lot size overall anyways, so it was, I guess, more of a benefit to them. But this is what this plat addresses, is the expansion of their lot, really. There was no easements needed, or any right-of-way, or anything like that. So that, that all remained the same. It was just the, the size of their lot grew.
Other staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the replat, RP 0123, of 542 Lake Forest Drive.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Stevens. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start right here. Nothing.
It seems like a complicated thing to do, but it's good to keep everything. I understand, thank you.
No questions.
Very good. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto number seven. A very exciting portion. Water treatment plant property acquisition at Lake of the Forest, staff.
Good evening, Frank Abart, Public Works Director. This hopefully is the last property acquisition for this particular project that I bring before you. So, I met with the, I wanna call them the board, I guess, Lake of the Forest Board of Directors. According to their bylaws, then they needed to appoint a second committee to review any real estate transactions, so I met with those folks. And as a result, we have an agreement that has, has legal review. Essentially, it's in the amount of $3,000. And in addition to that, we're gonna give them a water faucet there for their garden. They have to still pay a monthly fee for the meter, and they have to pay for the water that they use. The actual need for this is driven by the fact that we now have to produce fire flows from this location, which we weren't gonna do in the beginning. And so that requires a much larger footprint, because instead of three smaller pumps to just produce pressure, we now have to have five larger pumps to not only have and maintain water pressure in the entire area, but to have fire flows and backups for those fire flows that meet those requirements. So in a sense, that's why we needed this little extra bit of land here. This is for a permanent easement, and that's kind of the first step of a two-step process that is included in the agreement. The permanent easement is because it's actually in the City of Edwardsville. Having this permanent easement will allow us to start work as soon as we are able and complete work. We will, in the background, go through and pursue a plating change and all of those necessary things with the City of Edwardsville. with the city of Edwardsville, which may take however long it takes. At which time, then, we will own that property. But that's all part of the agreement.
Very good. Other staff? Any questions, concerns, comments from the citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agreement with the Lake of the Forest Homeowners Association in the amount of $3,000 for acquisition of a permanent easement along K, Highway K-32, and authorize the city manager to execute documents.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start right here.
I only have to say, there are pages and pages and pages just to get a water pump, sort of. Thank you.
Do you see any potential issues with trying to deal, the second part of that, getting the permanent easement?
I don't know. But the groundwork is laid with the people who own it. Who are selling the rights to us. So, like I said, if it takes five months, great. If it takes five years, it won't hinder anything that we need to do.
That won't, that won't be necessary for, for with progress.
Our preference, of course, is to own it because we have fixed assets on the, or we will have on that area. But the permanent easement allows us whatever we need to finish the project. The rest of the process can take however long it's gonna take. And I, you know, eventually, our, our goal is to own it, so.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck, especially with everything going on this week. Yeah. Don't wanna jinx it. Moving on to number eight this evening, our Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee 2023 Funding Recommendations. Staff.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. And I'm also staff liaison for the Drug and Alcohol Committee. Our committee met on Wednesday and reviewed applications that were submitted for funding for our Drug and Alcohol Fund. A third of our liquor tax goes towards that fund and needs, has to be spent on drug and alcohol-related programs. There were five applications for a total of $28,135. Clark Middle School At-Risk Program for $1,500, Project Graduation for $5,000, Paces for $5,000. The Police Department had a fentanyl-filtered hood for $11,510, and also a mobile drug test system for $5,125. Committee discussed all the proposals and recommends accepting all of them and funding all of them for 2023. There is $30,000 budgeted for those programs, so this would fit into the budget. The fund also provides 25% of the school resource officers' wages and benefits. The other 75% is billed to the school district. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other staff? Seeing none. Citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve funding in the amount of $28,135 for substance abuse programs, and equipment is recommended by the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Woods and seconded by Mr. Reeves. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here again with you, Mr. Reeves.
Now, you mentioned the SRO 25%, that, that was part of this?
No, that's separate. That's really not, doesn't have anything to do with tonight's proposal. That's just part, that's the other thing that's funded with the liquor tax money.
The, I wanted to ask you about Paces, and please don't construe this as that. I don't think it's a good idea. I'm just curious, you may not know the answer to this. Looking at their list of additional sources, I see no, any mention of our, any of our two other cities in the UG. And I'm just curious if they come to us, and, and do they ever go to those other two locations? Do they ever try to get any funding from those two municipalities?
I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure that Edwardsville has a drug, if you're over a certain population, I think it's 6,000, then your liquor tax gets split a third to drug and alcohol, a third to special parks, and a third to general fund. If you're under that population, it's just split between special parks and general. So Edwardsville may not have a drug and alcohol fund. Kansas City, Kansas, I can't tell you what they spend theirs.
Just curious, 'cause I know we, it's a good program to help fund, and I'm glad we are helping it, but I'm just curious if, if some of our neighbors are counting on us to help contribute and don't contribute themselves.
Yeah, I'm not sure about Casey Kay.
Okay, thank you.
Are these additional equipment, like the fentanyl hood or the mobile test system? Are those equipment they already have and were adding, or is it new equipment?
They're new equipment, I believe. I'm glad you came back. The fentanyl hood is for protection when they're testing or working with drugs. And then the mobile test device is Officer Cullums on our committee, and he likened it to the breathalyzer, but it's for drugs, to test for drugs.
So what are they doing now?
They're new.
They're working with fentanyl and other... I was curious. Wait, what do you?
I think there, I think there was, I think it was, this, this year, they had some officers, I think, that had to go to hospital.
If you'll come to the mic, please, for the recording. Thank you.
Currently, right now, Captain Kraus with the Police Department. Currently, right now, when officers are processing narcotics, illegal narcotics that they find out in the field, or testing narcotics, it's very tricky how they have to handle it when it comes to powdery substances. But now, fentanyl's being put into pill forms, powder forms, it's being found in marijuana, it's being found in essentially anything that you can potentially think of. They're putting it in to enhance the effects of that drug at who knows what amount. But we still have masks available for officers and gloves and all these different things. But where these tools come into play is they're able to test and identify the substances a lot quicker. And then the ventilation hood is they can manipulate these drugs inside of a controlled environment and package them and seal them without ever exposing themselves to it when it's in a self-contained environment. There's always gonna be a risk, and all of us carry, one of these pockets here has some stuff in it. All of us carry the Narcan and things like that. But unfortunately, with some of the amounts of dosaging, I can't carry enough Narcan on my person or in a group to affect people. So having these different tools is a mitigation. It's not a 100% solve-all, but we can be just a little bit better and a little bit safer. That can protect us. And yet, like Tilly had said, there's been a couple scares of exposures. Luckily, we haven't had any, but if you get onto Google, or TikTok, or the Facebook, and look around, you can see all kinds of people that are accidentally exposed, on top of the ones that are intentionally exposed.
Thank you.
The, the funds that are coming in, close to 30,000, do you feel like that amount's appropriate? And then my next question would be, how effective has this program been over the years, this past year?
The three programs that we're funding, we've funded for several years. And in the past, before COVID, we had each group come in, and we're gonna start that again this fall, into the, in the fall, and talk about their programs and what they did with the funds. So like I said, since, for the last few years, we haven't, just because of COVID. And so that helps us to know how our money's being, you know, what kind, what the programs are doing, and be able to question those that are...
They give back to you annually, or is this a quarterly thing?
Annually. So in October, they'll come and talk about their programs. And the 30,000, most years, we budget 50,000. We weren't sure, we were still, when we were budgeting for this, in the, not knowing what the, most of the funds come from the amphitheater and the Renaissance, which were two, you know, venues that were hit by the COVID crisis. So we weren't, we weren't sure how much funding we were gonna have available for that. So we lowered that budget, 'cause we weren't spending over that in past years. For 2024, the budget that we're gonna recommend is 50,000, because we did have increased revenue in 2022, so.
Are drug-related issues going up, or is it going down?
I think they're, I think they're going up. And if there's, and, and we've always, the committee, if there are programs out there that if someone comes in the middle of the year, we can come back and, and amend the budget, 'cause we've got carryover funds. So if there's programs that we feel would benefit from getting a grant from these funds, then we can spend it this year. We would just come to the council and ask for a, an amended budget and for recommended funding for that program, so.
Thank you. No other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Onto, that completes the new business this evening. Onto our reports, the first of which are city managers.
Just maybe carrying along with our conversation, unfortunate to have to continue it, but there is a discussion taking place at the high school gymnasium on April 12th at 7:00 PM. This is for all ages, but it is to review fentanyl, the dangers, and, and pretty much everything to do with it. The, the option to attend is, again, April 12th, 7:00 PM at the high school. There's also a live stream component to that as well, so you're able to get access that way. And then the other announcement, continued announcement, exciting news. Thursday, this Thursday, the water plant groundbreaking will take place at 1:00 PM. If you go out there, now you can see there's a lot of commotion, a lot of things taking place. So anybody that does wish to attend can park at the Public Works facility. There'll be transportation actually to take you out to the, the groundbreaking site. But again, that, that event is on March 30th, 30th, this Thursday at 1:00 PM. That's all I have.
1:00 PM?
One, 1:00 PM, yes.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move right into city council items, and we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
First off, thanks for all you do, Captain. I know this, this has gotta be very difficult on everybody, walking up to every situation and just wondering what's, you know, what's gonna happen. What I've been able to see over the years, we're very glad that you're here and do the great job that you do, and we appreciate it. Not to slight any of our other first responders, but you're sitting here, and anybody else that's a first responder, thank you.
Nothing. Thank you.
Nothing.
All right. The fraud awareness thing that's supposed to be at the Bonner Library tomorrow is going to be put off for a month, and I'm not sure why, and I'm not sure when. They're not sure when. At 11? Tomorrow, the fraud awareness conversation, which was supposed to be. I think the police were going to do something with that.
I've got that on my calendar, so that...
Okay, it's on your calendar, but it's been put off for a month. At least I heard that today at the library. And the next thing I want, okay, on Front Street by the fire engine, there's a rusted sign that is just ugly as anything, and it's in a beautiful green bush. It needs to go, because people coming into Bonner, you know, we've got some neat stuff along there, and some neat old houses and everything, and then there's this rusted sign.
We'll certainly have the city look into that, and perhaps our new codes enforcement officer can evaluate that.
Renate codes enforcement.
I have a potential concern about the new cigar bar that is going into town, and if they are being asked and/or required to have specific ventilation that will prevent carryover into their abutting businesses. That's something that we need to really give some attention to. It's, I wouldn't wanna own a business next to it if the smoke was infiltrating my business.
Good question.
Real quickly, these are two requests of Ms. Brake. If you could send us out a little bit of information on the, what Mr. Peterson was talking about, the high school, that education. And then secondly, I was wondering if we could make sure we put something out on social media if that, if that tomorrow's program has been canceled, so we can try to get a notification out to as many people as possible.
Now, Christina, you're pretty sure that's been canceled tomorrow. Better check with the library than...
Yeah, check with them before you put anything out, too.
But yeah, it would be a good idea, because when you're dealing with the elderly, you know.
Anything else, sir?
That's it, I'm sorry, sir.
Sir?
Chris Wood. The sign you're talking about is the one that doesn't have any information on it at all.
No information, just rust.
I've mentioned that one before also, so, yeah, it, I agree with you. There's two votes anyway. Also, I'm, I'm glad to be back. Glad to be back in Bonner Springs. Had a wonderful time on a trip. I'm also looking forward to the 1:00 meeting for the groundbreaking on the water plant, so, yeah.
I know, I have been given directions.
That's it. Very good. Well, for the mayor's portion, or the mayor's report, I'd like to first compliment the city on the new wayfinding signs that are on, mostly on Nettleton and around the intersections there. I, I think they're great additions. And forgive me, my obsessive compulsiveness. The signposts, I think, could be painted, or dressed up, or wrapped in something to make them look a little nicer. The, the signs are wonderful, and the signposts are just, eh, sorry. I don't, I only say that 'cause I appreciate them so much.
I think that's valid, 'cause I thought the same thing when I saw it.
Me, too.
It kinda looks like a construction, but with a nice sign.
I'm just bringing it. And...
You're on to something.
This evening, at the Ministerial Alliance, or the mayor, or I'm sorry, the Ministers Roundtable, is, I think, what they're called now. But they are working through Bonner Builders, or they're trying to start a volunteer group that are calling themselves Bonner Builders to try and help less fortunate with concerns, simple home repair, that kind of things, to help some of the less fortunate in our community. So, of course, the meeting here, I wasn't able to attend, but I know that Reverend Bill Kearns at the First Christian Church has more information. If anybody would like to be able to help, or I know of anyone that, that can volunteer for that kind of stuff, they're trying to organize a group to do that. Also, I had a, a great opportunity to participate this morning in, as was referenced earlier, the welcoming of our new county administrator. This has been a long process that... that appears to have reaped great rewards. Mr. David Johnston is the new county administrator. He comes from Covington, Kentucky, and looks like he will be a great addition to Wyandotte County. As and has, has been my charge, I am committed to making sure he and the, the whole county elected body recognizes where Bonner Springs is on a continued basis. And they are, I'm being very well received, better than ever before. Mayor Gardner is very supportive and committed to Bonner's continued prosperity, not at the expense of any other part of Wyandotte County, as it should be. Also, I'd like to ask Christina Brake, our city clerk, to send out invitations and our schedule for future upcoming workshops that have time available to both Mayor Gardner, the Kansas City, Kansas mayor and Wyandotte County CEO. He'd like an opportunity to come and be in front of the, the Bonner Springs City Council just to maintain an open line of communication. No real agenda other than just that opportunity to recognize each other and communicate our concerns. Also as well, also to the commissioners, all the commissioners can be invited, but certainly the ones that represent us. You know, we should invite all of them. They, they are our county administrators. And then also our district attorney, spoke with him today as well and, and he'd love to come back. And hopefully they'll be able to do that on a, a regular basis or rotating, not all at one time, but certainly have that opportunity in the future. So we're looking forward to that. Continue to have lots of compliments on the city of Bonner Springs and how nice it's looking coming into spring. Lots of people are coming into our community and it's being very well recognized. So thank you for all the hard work that the city's doing, all of the different departments, as well as the programming that the Parks and Rec's doing. And I, I'm very fortunate. I get a lot of compliments. So, thank you all very much. I stand for questions. If anyone has anything for me, please.
Just real quickly, would be, wouldn't be better ideal to have Mr. Johnston come out here as well? Could he?
Yeah, I included.
Same evening?
Yeah, I included him.
Oh, okay.
Right, meant to.
And I was just able to verify the fraud discussion that was originally scheduled for tomorrow has been rescheduled for Wednesday, April nineteenth.
Yeah, that, I was told, but at the front desk.
Okay, when is it, April nineteenth? Wednesday, April nineteenth at the Senior Center at eleven AM.
Okay, the Senior Center, because that's not where it was, at eleven AM. April, what was the nineteenth?
It's not how to commit fraud, it's how to stay away from fraud.
Avoid fraud.
Avoid fraud. Yes. Yes.
Doesn't specify that.
Any, any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, word earned.
Thank you, sir.